I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is being cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV, Channel 8, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.cofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Alex Idee, and as a reminder, if you could just turn your cellphones to vibrate during the meeting, and if you come up to speak, we'd ask that you sign in and give us your name. So with that, we'll go to oral communications, Item 2A, any additions or deletions to the ...
Staff has no changes.
Okay, and we're going to add a, be and do a public comment period. This portion of the meeting is for those that would like to make a, do a public comment on something that's not on tonight's agenda, so we'll give you a few minutes if you'd like to come up.
Thank you so much for adding that. I'm Maureen Smith, new, fairly new resident to Capitola, just this year, but 40 years in the county. Last meeting, I made some statements, and I have a good correction for the statements I made, something that I know that I'm happy about. I made statements about the cell tower effects at Peace United Church in Santa Cruz, and I found out since the last meeting that our comments about the radiation being focused on the childcare center, on the preschool, and the yard for the preschool, well, the situation has changed. Our comments were taken in by one of the ministers, and he removed one of the cell towers. I don't know if he redirected the other one, but now all the radi, the heavy-duty radiation is going to the parking lot at that church and not to the preschool. And the, I just had to come and tell you this because it does show that sometimes you can make a difference even when you're dealing with the cell tower issues. Sometimes the people in charge are able to do something. The second issue is also good. It was regarding the cell towers above staff of life, and we were very concerned because it had been reported to us that people were becoming ill at the drugstore there. I'm sorry, I can't remember the name now, anyway. But I, again, my husband, we checked it out with the meter, and it wasn't heavy-duty at the pharmacy there. And I also talked to people, and, you know, people are getting the flu, but they weren't getting head tumors and cancer. And the heavy-duty radiation in that area is unexplainable at this point. It was between two buildings, and we cannot, we don't know the source yet, and if we will follow up on it. But both of these instances were improvements on what I had previously said, and I felt it was important to let people know that. Unfortunately, I don't have any good news for Capitola, but maybe there will be.
Well, thank you, ma'am, and congratulations on your voice being heard and people taking action on that.
The real way to protect people is to remove the sources of harm, and the radiation levels are increasing dramatically. One article I read said, "We are receiving about 10 billion times more radiation in the environment than we did, than we did in the 1960s." That's an article called "No Safe Place" by a woman who wrote to the mayor of Vancouver urging them not to put in citywide Wi-Fi. There is no safe amount, and, and the area Maureen Smith was talking about, there's sold site on top of Bill's Wheels, there's the Restaurante Italiano, I mean, by the fire station, this is just proliferating. And with the 5G technology that the chair of the FCC and the telecom industry are pushing, this will mean cell antennas everywhere. They like call them microcells, but, and somebody here said they read through all the cell tower applications quite carefully, and I appreciate that. And I've read through it too, and here's something that was submitted by Hammid and Edison, FCC Radio Frequency Protection Guide, it says. And Hammid and Edison is an engineering firm, and you'll see their documents probably in every cell tower application. And here's what it says about the protection guide. "These limits apply for continuous exposure from all sources and are intended to provide prudent margins of safety for all persons regardless of age, gender, size, or health." That's a quote from the document you have. Now, that is a totally fallacious statement. You and I know children are more vulnerable, and so is the fetus, than an adult. You and I know that if someone has asthma and they go into a smoke-filled room, or they're affected by some toxin, it's much worse and devastating than for someone who's in very good health, though it's not beneficial for them. So relying on statements like this, and the public is not supposed to provide the data that is well substantiated since 1932 of microwave sickness, is, is just ludicrous. Under state zoning codes, where you're required to protect the public health and well-being, and we need to be putting a halt to this. It's taking away our rights, this is surveillance, this is harm to health. And a friend of mine who was in ...
Marilyn, you need to wrap it up now.
Well, okay, she made an interesting point. She liked, said it's like eminent domain with no compensation. Thank you.
Thanks, Marilyn.
I'll leave you with these DVDs.
Okay, do we have anyone else from the public that would like to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, thank you, and then we'll bring that back, and we'll move on to Item 3, which is approval of our minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one set of minutes from July 21st and a second from August 4th. We could do those in both unless somebody has ...
I need to abstain from the 21st, I was not there.
Okay, do we want to, do we have a motion to accept, adopt the July 21st?
So move.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye with one abstention?
Yes.
So we'll go move on to August 4th. Do we have a motion to adopt August 4th?
I'll make ...
Go ahead.
I'll go. First and second.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we're going to move into Item 4, public hearing for our zoning code update.
Okay, thank you. I believe tonight is our, either our 11th or 12th meeting on the zoning code update, and before you, this evening, we'll start with historic preservation, and following historic preservation, we'll discuss public notice and hearings and the glossary. So we came to you previously with historic preservation chapter, and the chapter that was included in the packet is the most up-to-date iteration of that with red lines of all the changes. During that meeting, I think the planning commission gave us great direction on putting in more practical terminology so that one goes through this section of code. It's really easy to understand what type of permit you're going to get, and the name of the permit really relates to what, what you're asking to do. So I think it reads a lot more clearly. And other than that, there was changes to the findings that need to be made and the evaluation criteria, but it really clarified the process and also who's involved in the process. So when we talk about the contracted state historian, certified state historian, no longer the local historian will have any decision-making or assessment within the document, but those are the major changes that took place, and this evening I'm looking for some feedback or any areas that you want to rework. With that, I'll open discussion. I have the chapter up on the slides, and we can scroll to whichever section you'd like to discuss.
I have a few small things. I think it's great we're moving definitely in the right direction here, and we're very close, as far as I'm concerned. I wondered about a couple of things here that might want to be in the glossary. The first one is the city contracted state-certified architectural historian. I don't know if that's a self-explanatory phrase, you know, title, or whether we wanted to do that. I, I'm not stuck on it, but I noticed it was not in. And also, potential historic resource is not in the glossary. I don't know whether we want to put that in as well, but I did note that neither one of those were in that. I have a comment on page 84-4, which is under 1784-050, and I'm kind of wondering about why we have a difference of criteria for the designating historic resources and potential historic resources. Those lists, both of which have four items on them, seem so similar in so many ways. I'm wondering if it's confusing that, do we want them to be different for a reason? Was, is there a reason why those are stated differently and have slightly different meanings, possibly? Is it better, is it easier for people if we adopt the same criteria?
Isn't the designated historic resource one that the council has taken action on, and the potential historic resource is a list that there has not been any formal action taken on at this point?
Right, right.
So they're ...
They are different.
They are different.
Right, but ... And aren't we, aren't we looking at the same list of criteria for potential that we have adopted for our designated? I mean, wouldn't we be looking towards our list of why we want things, why things are already designated? Why, why wouldn't we use that as our list for potential?
I'll clarify. Within B, when you read through, it says, under the first paragraph, "Based on a recommendation from the city contracted state-certified architectural historian, the community development director may add a structure to the potential historic resource list if it meets any of the above criteria for classifying a designated historic resource or any of the following criteria." So I think it's, the way to look at it is it's almost two tiers, that if it meets the designated historic resource, it's more of an iconic building in town, or, you know, it's on the National Register, but I think B, the potentially historic resources, is not as high of a standing as the, as A. We did modify, we took away two of the review criteria under the designated historic resources that were more in line with the National Park standards, but ...
Uh-huh, yeah, I liked that. I'm, I'm all right with the way it is, I just thought it might be confusing for people to, you know, wonder about that, but if I'm the only person, I'm fine with it. I kind of liked having it a little more relaxed for the potential, simply because you might find a house that's significant but doesn't necessarily meet all of the strict absolute, it's not an iconic. Yeah, yeah, good. Next page, on C2, it says, "The community development director determines that the project may result in a significant adverse impact of historic resource as defined in the California Environmental Quality Guidelines." Where is it in this that we talk about our own criteria or diverging? Is it in the previous that I was just talking about, where we diverge from the state's criteria and create, you know, we've created our own criteria? Are we sort of saying that without really coming out and saying it in this, or can we say it a little stronger? Can we?
So for designating, that's definitely under the previous section under B, that gives a little more of a local feel of, you know, more of a catch, where you can catch those properties that aren't quite landmark. But for this section that refers to SEQA, this is under historic alteration permits, so it's a, it's stating that it's required if the community development director thinks there may be a significant impact.
So that's only, these, this is only referring to state-designated historic structures, is that correct?
No, this is if it's a potentially historic resource, and the, and there's been, modifications are being made to it, such as, we'll say, a big addition on the front of the building, and the community development director looks at it and says, "Okay, this is, this is a, it could cause a significant adverse impact," and that, you know, that structure could come off the list or something, and at that point, that's when it's required to go before the board for reviewing, so.
All right. Thank you for explaining that. And then did we go over this? And I've forgotten, just because I wanted to forget, because I think it should be another way, and that is on page 84-7, under 1784-070. In B, we're having the, we're having a historic, a designated resource go straight to the council as opposed to the planning commission.
Right, I had real problems with that section.
I caught that, but if you look on D, on the same, under the same heading of ...
Yeah, they don't jive.
Right, so I'm agree with you. I think it, I think it should come to the planning commission. It says planning commission recommendation, but the city council, I think, has the final authority on it, but those two don't seem to ...
They don't match, they don't match.
You know, the order is off.
Right.
We'll put that before, and, yeah.
Because I think we did talk about it, and we all agreed that the planning commission makes a recommendation, and then it goes to council. It doesn't go straight to council. Yeah.
So it says that in D, but the B kind of, the B kind of confused me.
So as far as I'm concerned, then that's, those are my comments, and I think the other ones I'm satisfied with, the discussion we had tonight, and if we change this, and then the staff can decide whether to put those other two things in the glossary or not, I'm fine with that.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, I was going to let you know that I found a mistake on page 5, under D, Assessment and Consultation. It will reword that on the, under 1, a proposed alteration, so this is page 84-5. It proposed alteration to A, and then we need to say potential historic resource.
Right.
That carried over from the previous thing. Okay, sorry, excuse me. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to note on one of the items that Gail brought up, the state, city contracted state-certified person, it says it's city contracted, and I also kind of noted that there's nothing in here that says how we select that person. And it's been historically, we've found, you know, the, the people that, Leslie Dill is just a perfect example of a person that we've worked with for years and years, and we believe that she does the job in the same manner that we think about it. If, if the city development director decided they wanted to change that, what's the process that they would go through?
That's outlined in our, in the city's purchasing guidelines, so if it's a contract that's over $25,000, we would have to go out for competitive bidding, RFP, excuse me, RFP and the like.
Okay, but other than that, there's no group of people that get together and say, yeah, you know, we like this person and this other ...
You know, if it's under $25,000, we do have some discretion to pick and choose people, costs as a factor, qualifications, of course, things of, you know, familiarity. But if it's over $25,000, then, you know, it goes to that competitive process. Typically, we have a panel, we evaluate their proposals and make a selection on that basis.
Do you know where this particular role falls in the $25,000 above or below?
Well, you know, we've been kind of doing it as an ad hoc arrangement. Technically, I think we should probably put together a standing-on-call-type contract that would have to go out for bid, and it's just something we haven't done.
And it seems like in that contract, you might be under $25,000 because most of the cost is going to be paid by the applicant, not the city. So it would surprise me if the city's contract, unless you were going to do some special project with her, would actually be over the $25,000.
City attorneys seem to think it doesn't matter where the monies come from. For instance, we contract out.
Just try to get out.
I know, I've tried that too. A third-party AIR is like for the skate park, and Monarch Cove, we still had to bring those to council, even though it wasn't city dollars.
I didn't know that. Given that that's it, then I would like to see us try and put something in the glossary that defines that position with some level of qualifications, because one of the problems that we're trying to cure is that everybody has one, and sometime an applicant can go and get one that doesn't do the job the same way that our people do, or doesn't understand the city's criteria.
Even with a contract and an RFP, you're going to include in that RFP the things that are important to you, and so they will respond to that, you know, not only with cost, but with qualifications. So you do have some discretion in there about qualifications.
I don't think it's so much qualifications we're talking about. I think it's someone who understands the criteria, you know, because what we've seen in the past, if somebody comes in and starts talking about, you know, large ...
But I think, you know, I mean, this is a government contract, and you get into the whole thing about how you award government contracts, and there are all these strict rules about it, and one of the things you cannot do is sort of select on a personal basis that you know this, you know, it's like, I know this contractor, and I know he would really do a better job than any other contractor because of the quality of his work. You've got to carefully put that in your request so you can evaluate that, or you're ...
I see what you're saying, and I'm trying to think of what, an example of someone that we hire over and over again to do a specific job that, you know, a consultant that is, comes, comes from, you know, another agency or another firm and does things for building, or does things for, I mean, do we have a, do we have a on-contract building official?
We do have a certified access specialist, and I think he's out of Sacramento or somewhere else. I think it's uncommon, though. I think most of the people that we routinely do business with are generally local.
Well, that's, that really wasn't my point. My point was, I'm just trying to look for an example of when we do it in the city and how we could model this particular type of a contract after that so that we don't run into state problems and we don't, you know ...
I mean, I think it's sort of a model that we use every time we go out, and every contract I've been involved with at the city and other jobs, we always put both a local preference in there and a scoring criteria for having familiarity with the area of which the work is taking place, because there is a value to that, and, you know, it doesn't run afoul of any state contract laws.
Is it true that we are, we have been using Leslie Dill and Franklin Maggi solely over the last year because ...
Yeah, the last, yeah, the last couple few years, yeah.
So what have we been using to make that legal and acceptable?
We've, we've been issuing purchase orders on a job-by-job basis, they're all under $25,000.
Okay, so how can we, going forward, structure that so that we can put it into our, either our glossary or our code, so that it, we can, that's one of the things we would like to see perpetuated, is that it might not be them, but it would be someone that, you know, maybe representative from the planning commission and the, and the staff all feel has, understands Capitola, has had a lot of experience in Capitola, and understands what we're, what we're looking for.
Yeah, having the ...
That could just be the standard.
I know, you can code a, you can't put that in your zoning ordinance.
Well, you can't, you don't have to put it in your zoning ordinance, but we can, we can practice, but we know what the position should be, right?
That's what you put in your RFPs when they go out, I mean ...
What are the requirements?
It could be a procurement policy or a purchasing policy.
But we could, but could we not put the requirements for what this position is in this area, at least an explanation of what we're ...
Zoning code? I mean, maybe as sort of a note of information, although it's weird.
Or in the glossary, maybe just in the glossary, because this position would normally possess these ...
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could put desirable traits or something. I just don't know that it would have meat. I mean, a zoning code regulates land use, not a city's purchasing process.
Well, then, when you do put up, when you do a got for an RFP, then at least we have that, and everyone knows what that, what we're looking for, it's not ...
Is the glossary an appropriate place, or that's still within the zoning code and so it's not appropriate?
I mean, I think it would be fine if we're very general and say that, you know, the city's contracted historian is somebody that ideally would have these ...
Local knowledge, licensed by the state, right?
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
I had a different comment that kind of ties in with this, which was, I, I liked the drafting of this very much. I mean, I don't know how it's going to play out in reality, but it reads very well, except for one thing. I really do not, I'm not crazy about the term city contracted state-designated architectural historian. It seems like it's either too much bureaucratic ease.
Maybe we should give it an acronym.
Or it comes from Virginia, I'm not sure.
Maybe the state-certified part could be in the glossary, and it doesn't have to be ...
Right, that's a good point.
Before this came up, I was thinking, the answer, you know, what's the answer to that, so it doesn't read so crazy, is to take the city contracted part out and have a clause in here somewhere that says, "When referred to a state-designated architectural historian, it means," and then you can also put in some language that you're talking about. I like that.
I like that, too.
And you just find a place in this where it makes sense in the, in the structure.
So it's only said once, and then it's not so long?
Yeah, 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 and so we don't have, we have, I was looking at it, we have about six or eight places where we have that six-word phrase that's very awkward.
It's trying to define the position.
Right. Well, city contracted is, that's very creative construction, but not too common.
And I think it's just important to note that what we're, what we're changing from is a city historian and this other person to just this other person, and at least in my experience, the curator of the museum is interviewed, at least with a panel. So there are more than, than just staff eyes looking at what we want this person to be able to offer to the community and to the museum, and I want to make sure that this position gets some of those other eyes as well, because it's not like, it's not like other positions that are, are contracted. because it's not like, it's not like other positions that are contracted.
It's different for each application, right? So, I mean, you're talking about getting a panel together every time?
No, 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 no. What we, what we did in the past was, with each application, we wanted it to be a contracted, we wanted to specify that it was somebody that was contracted with the city so that we stopped getting every application with a different person, you know, doing the homework. So we wanted it to be one person that it can offer, you know, commonality amongst all of the different applications. That's number one, what we're trying to solve. But then that person, I just, I just don't think that person should be selected and, and changed in a vacuum. So it may be that we're in conflict with doing it on a case-by-case basis and the way that I'm thinking, and that may be what we're talking about.
One, one other place, rather than the glossary, that we could put it, is when you go to part four of the zoning code, and it talks about your permits. Within design permit, we outline like who the ark and site committee is and how they are, you know, become part of that committee. We could, we probably, we probably should, in that section, because you're required to have a design permit, outline who is that state certified.
Then you should cross-reference it in this.
City contract, you know, then we'll cross-reference it. But I think that's the appropriate place for the code.
Yeah.
I mean, not every time it comes up, though, cross-reference it, but someplace in the.
Right. It would be chapter one-twenty.
So I have a couple minor word things, just easy ones, beginning in the sections seventeen-eighty-four-oh-four-oh. I think in this particular one, you need to leave the word list in there because it's maintenance of, you know, list of potential historical resources. It's not maintenance of potential historic resources. So I just think, and then when you get to seventeen-eighty-four-oh-four-oh, again, you need to put the list in there. And when we talk about, under C, the applications for review on page three, and you say that the historical, architectural historian will complete a DPR five-two-three, I think you should say, or equivalent, so that when the state changes, the numbers on their forms are, ordinance is not inconsistent.
Commissioner Westman, could you clarify where that changes?
Top of page three, eighty-four dash three. Just something in there, so it's more than just that one thing. And this is really nitpicky, but on D, the next one down, at the end of that sentence, it should be add an N, designated, not A, shouldn't it? No, it should be A.
Planning commission shall review a designated historic resource application.
I think that was pretty much all.
Okay, and your first comments were for seventeen-eighty-four-oh-four-oh, maintenance.
Yeah.
The list of.
Of the list, because you're not doing maintenance of the potential historic structures, unless you want to come maintain my house for me.
And was there a second?
It's in the.
One within that section?
It's just in the list, in the title.
In the title, okay.
And then in the section itself.
And where in the section? Because I see it under A, it's.
Yeah, I was just, the title, maintenance of.
The list of, okay, just the title.
The titles.
Okay. Any others?
No, but I thought this was great. I thought it was easy to read, it was easy to follow and understand. I thought you guys did a really nice job on this.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I have, I have a few things, and I, I agree, I think it's, it's come a long ways. But I have a couple of things, and maybe I'm not as smart as you because I didn't find, some of it is easy to read. And some of the confusion comes between the two types of, the designated type historic and then the potential of the list we have. Starting on eighty-four point two, when it says, request to remove is under the designated historic resource. It seems to me that when you look at.
Can you give us a number, a letter, whatever?
Oh, I'm sorry, number four, B four, request to remove.
It's page two?
Eighty-four point two, seventeen-eighty-four-zero-three-zero, B four.
B four, okay.
Request to remove. When you look at requests to remove and other areas, removal of structured lists on the following page on item C, it has a lot more information. So it seems to me, maybe we could do a little more detail, and I don't know, I was thinking maybe it could even be in its own item, but, but I guess it would be enough. As long as, if you look at, on the following page, eighty-four three, under seventeen-eighty-four-zero-forty, C, removal of listed structures from the potential historic list, it goes into a little more description of the process. But it's, it kind of seems like it gets lost in the application process of becoming that, adding or removing. But maybe that's just me, just a thought.
Okay.
So you're thinking the two requests to remove should basically be worded identic, almost identic?
Yeah, at least similar enough to, it has the same information, so that's all.
I think that's a good comment.
Yeah.
And on eighty-four four, well, it kind of goes along this whole thing. So my, my pet peeve with this potential historic list, and it's nothing personal to the individuals who did the Capitola Architectural Survey in nineteen-eighty-six, but it's, it seems to me kind of vague. I, I've gone around the town looking at a number of these, and I have no idea how some of them got on the list. I brought this up before. So it seems to me, if it's an item D where it's, now, obviously, I understand the historical context, the register of historic features, the national register, and even the Depot Hill feasibility study that Franklin did. But D for me seems like it's kind of a mixed-match group of things that came out. I'm not sure how they got there. And if we're going to create this list, and we have a process for people to get on or off that list, I'm okay with that. But can we start off with maybe a ninety-day window, sending to these addresses, letting them know? Because I, some of the people don't even know they're on this list. They have no idea that their house is on this list. And if we're going to put this in our new code with this new, you know, standards that we have, maybe we just, and really, as long as I'm concerned with are those ones that fall under the D seven-N, that we notify those people, let them know they're going to be on this potential list, so we can start off with a good list. And whether those people want to be removed or added, a, a remove, I guess, would be the primary one.
So where are you looking?
Well, didn't, didn't we talk about that we were, they were going to go through this list? And one of the reasons we came up with our definition about, you know, what we think on the potential historic list are going to be a site, a structure or feature that had previously been identified by the city. But somewhere we talk about, you know, they're prior to World War Two.
Beginning.
Yes, in the very beginning.
It does talk about that, but if you, if you look at, and one that I think everyone can remember, is one across from Gail's, that brown stucco on the corner, I think it's Burlingame and Monterey. You know what I'm talking about? It's got like the little low fence with the archways, it's right on the corner.
Right, I know where it is, I think it may be.
And I could, I could go on and on. I mean, I've looked at a number, I'm, to me, maybe there's a reason to have it. I don't know what the reasoning is. I've talked to some homeowners that did not know their house was on the list. So I get, I get having, how we identified what that list is going to be. But at least give the people an opportunity to have some input prior to, you know, creating this, this final list that they, we give a, we give a concept on how to get off of it, but if someone comes in and now they have to, they have to either apply, go through that application process, or now they have to go through the process if they're going to do any type of alterations. To me, it just seems like we've got to give them a heads up and let them know they're going to be on this list before we just surprise them with it.
I think they're already on the list, though.
No, they're on the list, but do they know that?
No, I understand, but I mean, the way that we handle applications today.
Right.
Involves that list. And it's, we're now, we're now defining how you get off the list, and we're defining what elements have you on the list. And if the community development director looks at the list, and he looks at the qualifications, and he sees something that's on the list that shouldn't be because it doesn't meet the rest of it, it's real easy to get it off.
But that, but when you look at D, and you go look at some of the homes.
No, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that to blanket, take all of D off.
No, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying, I'm saying notify the people on D, so they have an opportunity to remove themselves from the list before we.
I think that's contrary to the purpose of a list. I don't think people should have the opportunity to remove themselves. If we want to go ahead and redo the list and use new criteria, and the criteria that everybody agrees with, then the houses that meet that criteria are just on that list, it's just potential. And again, they can be, their house may not, may not be qualifying once it's really researched.
I think one of the difficulties we have is this list was put together, it was never adopted by anybody, it was never approved by anybody. Nobody got any notice that they were on the list. It was, you know, sort of the secret list at City Hall. And if I'm buying a house, you know, and I come down to City Hall, and they say, oh, well, your house is on this potential historic list, you know, that can affect a lot of things about whether I buy that property as well as the financing of it. I've been told that some of the mortgage companies, they have a whole different requirement for properties that are listed as potential historic structures. So I think we do have some obligation, and I don't know what it is, to, you know, the members of our community, if we're doing something that's going to impact them selling their house or someone else buying it, I think we need to be careful about that. And, and for me, this went a long way, and I thought we left it that, you know, our hope was that at the point in time when there was a little money and more resources, that they were going through this list and thin it out, and hopefully, we would end up with only about a hundred structures, not three hundred and something structures on here.
And the fact that they're not really designated, they're just for, as I understand it, they're for the staff to be able to look at and, and help staff determine whether they're going to need a further.
Right, but it's, it's a list that even though it wasn't adopted or anything, does have a huge impact on people.
And to the point where the list.
Financial impact on them.
Exactly, and some of the, even if someone purchased a house, they may purchase, it may not be on any of the deed, any of the information, because it's a, it's a list that the city has, nobody else has, this is like a secret list. So if somebody buys a house, and then they come down to do some renovation, they find out, well, wait a second, you're on this potential list. So now you have, either you had to pay a fee to get it off the list, you have to go through that process, or you have to go through the alterations of have, being part of this historical process. I'm just saying, give the people an opportunity that haven't been ever noticed about their house to.
So you're talking about D, the Capitola Architectur.
The D is my only.
Okay, so I, you know, I just, I have to say that I take a little exception to the.
Well, I don't want to.
It's been in effect since nineteen-eighty-six.
But it's not in effect, it's never been.
But it has been used, it has been used.
Right, but it's never been adopted, it's never.
I agree, I agree.
The council, the planning commission, no one ever said this is any kind of official list. It's, prior to it going in our zoning ordinance, it's sort of been a list and a bottom drawer that planners keep list of all sorts of things.
But, and, and I've looked at it completely from a different perspective, but it has been used, and it hasn't been a secret list. And a lot of your Realtors, and having been a Realtor, and having operated in Capitola, I know that Realtors, good ones anyway, do their homework on properties, and, and owners and buyers are told if it's a historic property, and they know about the architectural survey, and they look at it, they come to the museum and, and pay research fees. But what I want to say is that when we started this whole thing, I thought we were all in agreement that the zoning code was going to address the process and how we set this up, and that until we have the money to take that list and redo the list with a reasonable amount of care, we weren't going to throw that in and try and get it done with the zoning code. So if you're talking about implementing what we've got with the zoning code and then putting together some kind of a notice package to the properties that are included in it, and having that be done as a separate thing, I'm all for it. But I don't think that it's realistic for us to sit here and decide what goes on and off the list, or for us to say, okay, you're on the list, and if you want to get yourself off the list.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if we're going to, and I like what, what we've done here, I think it's appropriate. I'm just saying, it's a surprise to a lot of these people on this list because this is a list that isn't known to a lot of people. And I talked to a couple people on this, the list that didn't even know that their, their home was on this list, so, and, and I, and I don't know, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to offend anybody.
Regardless of whether they're on a list or not, they've got the home they've got, and it's going to come up as a surprise to them anyway. At least this is notifying people who care enough to come down and look.
Well, that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking to notify the people so they have a potential, they have the opportunity to come and get on or off the list.
I don't think, I, I agree with the first part of your sentence, but I don't agree. I don't think people should have the ability to get on or off.
Well, we have a process for getting off the list.
Right, but I don't think people could just come and say, I want to get off.
No, 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 I'm saying they go through this process, but they need to be noticed, and give, give them a chance to go through this process that we've come up with right on the get-go. If they're going to be on the list, let's notice them, let them know what the new process is, and they have that opportunity.
So it's going to be months, if not years, before the zoning ordinance goes into effect in most of Capitola. So I don't see any reason, you know, if we're just talking about the Ds on the list, even if we're, if we're talking about everyone who's on the list who's not in a designated historic district, sending them a notice saying that they're on this potential list, you're probably talking about a hundred houses, and I don't think even close to that many. I think you're probably talking, because most of the houses on here are in some sort of district or have been designated.
Right.
You know, it seems like we could send a letter to those people and just say, you know, there is a list in, you know, City Hall, potentially historic structures, you know, if you have, and your home is listed on that, if you have any concerns, come down and.
I'm not sure that's a good idea. And the reason is, I mean, maybe putting something on the website might be an alternative. But if you send out a hundred letters, and four or five of them don't end up in the right place, and those people later come in, you know, and, no, we didn't get that notice, and so it creates issues there for people who claim that they did not get the notice that we decided we should send that everyone.
And maybe I should go over seventeen-eighty-four-oh-four-oh and just clarify that this list, it is maintained at the staff level, it's administrative. So it would be when these applications come in, and I actually have two going on right now in Capitola that are on the potential list. One on Bay Avenue, that's, we just send it out to Leslie Dill, she's doing the review. She calls me and says, Katie, this is not looking like it's going to be historic. Can I write a simple memo to keep the costs down for the applicant? And in that, she can write her findings in a memo, we provide them to the community development director, and out of pocket is typically between maybe a thousand to fifteen-hundred for a home, for the applicant to get that review, just to find out that, you know.
Just let me state here, I think that's inappropriate. Because someone put them on a list arbitrarily, they never knew it, and now it's going to cost, that's just me, that's just.
And in this example, I will say, the home used to be an L-shaped cottage, a large addition was placed on it, the roof was changed, the whole side of the structure has changed, so there are, there are many alterations that would cause this to be off the list. So I think from viewing it from the road, the, the folks that put together the list probably looked at and said, oh, we can see some type of L-shaped old cottage in there, maybe it should be on the potential list. But anyway, that's the process at this point, it's not, they don't have to go to planning commission, they're not paying an application review other than paying for the third-party technical, you know, review.
Well, and I thought the way that we wrote this, if you, and, and I take exception to, it was arbitrary, because I don't believe it was arbitrary. I know it was a secret list because nobody ever told anybody, but I think there were all.
That's not true either.
There was.
There was plenty of public discussion about this list.
But there was, there was, there was, there was a lot of educated effort put into coming up with this list in the first place. But way back when the survey was done, it was a long time ago, and nobody's tracked changes to the homes. Some of them, you go look at the photograph that's in the survey, and it doesn't even closely resemble what is sitting on the property today. Those properties, I thought, the way that we had this written, when you find one of those properties, you don't need to send it to Leslie Dill to say, hey, is this historic or not? Because it's obviously been altered since the, and staff should be able to take that one off without the fifteen-hundred dollars or the thousand dollars or whatever. that one off without the fifteen hundred dollars or the thousand dollars or whatever. I thought that was going to go into this process.
If we were to look at the list, and there was an address, and the home is completely new, and there's no question that it's not historic, we could look at it and take it off the list based on this language, so, I should say the Community Development Director.
And if there's any kind of a question, then it's to the good of the community for it to get some level of review.
And also having a list, I think actually protects the majority of the people in Capitola, because who's to say someone can't come in if there's no list and say any home, you know, that's a-
No, I'm not saying no list, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that if you have one of these homes under item D, under the D, that was the architectural survey, and maybe I need some more history here, because my understanding was it was a group of individuals, and I think you were on that-
No, I wasn't, actually.
There was a group that went around and identified them, right?
Yes.
So it's like their preferences.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't that, it was people identified them, as I understand it, and those were people who had some experience with this, with the museum and on the staff, I think, and then they winnowed out the ones, you know, it was a, it wasn't just a, let's pile all these on. I think it was a good effort at the time, but I don't, again, I wasn't really involved during that time. But my experience of it after that, and working on historic preservation from then on, I, the list has always been considered to be done by people who knew what they were doing, even though they were local volunteers, it was compiled, and the houses that got on it had some criteria, some, you know, in fact, we should have a list of the criteria that they used for that.
I mean, the reality for the ones that are just Ds, I mean, there's not going to be-
There's seven, like seventy-one of them, but-
Are just Ds, or not, because a lot of them are like D and E.
No, just Ds alone, there's like seventy, seventy-ones.
Well, if we want to go through that list, I prepared and did a bunch of research on that list way back when, before we had the discussion that said, we're not really going to determine the list, we're going to write the process for how we do it. If we're going to go through the list, I would like to continue the item and talk about the list, because I didn't bring any of that with me tonight, but I did a lot of research on it.
No, no, I'm fine, I'm just asking for, if we're going to do this list, and I think the list is important, I think we need the list, I think there's probably some very significant homes under just item D, but a number of them, I don't, and I'm not, I'm not a historian by any, architectural historian, but I would, I would like to see what they think is historic for some of this.
I think that's a big process, and I think, you know, if we want to do that, we have to direct staff to ask the council if they have a lot of money for us to-
To do that.
-take a look at that list again.
Well, I'm not, I'm not even trying to take it that far, I'm just trying to say, notice the people, like we notice for every meeting in their area, so it's a common, just like we do our noticing program now, and it's an official process, if they don't respond, they don't respond, that's, at least we did the official process.
I wonder about what Ed said, having to do with legality of whether somebody gets that.
We deal with the legality of noticing people all the time, I mean, that's, we have a, we have a process for noticing.
But I think, Ed, if, if we want to notice them and have them come in, I think we should be better prepared with a presentation for them and saying, this is what this means, rather than just saying, hey, you're on this list, and let them think about what it's going to mean.
Educate them a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, I just think it would be-
Were you thinking of, we're having a hearing where seventy people are going to be noticed, and they're going to come in and say, I'm going to be on the list for this reason.
That's not what I'm thinking at all.
I'll tell you something, I'd like to call for the question here, because this is a long process, and I think there is not a majority for that specific action, and we have a long night ahead of us, and I think we can continue it if we want, but I think we need to, you know-
No, I'm good with that, let me state what I'm really asking though, because I think there's some confusion.
I think we know what you're asking.
What I'm asking for is, when we adopt this, those folks that those item D are noticed, they have the opportunity to come in and talk to our Community Development, they don't have to come to us, they have the authority to put them on or take them on or off the list, but at least they've been notified that they have a property that's on that list that wasn't done in a process by a historian.
So do we want to do a consensus for this, or a vote for this, or what?
Can I add one comment, Ed? So, the Capitola Architectural Survey, which was done in 1986, was done by a historian.
Okay, well then I'm good, because that's not what my understanding was.
Well, I think the field work was done, the field work was done by various people.
No, no, this is, the eighty-six was the list that was adopted when the Riverview Terrace Historic District went in place, the Longway one, when we did those federal historic districts based on the flood problem, because FEMA just come out with the new flood regulations. And you have that book, I've got probably ten copies at my house if you don't, and that was, the Capitola Historical Survey was done, and I'm trying to think of the woman's name, but it was done under contract by a-
Catherine Golberry?
No, 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 this is someone completely different, she was hired, it was under contract, she and a fellow worked on it, but this one, that one was done by a historian. So I don't think-
How about this, I'll drop everything.
You should go.
I said my piece, everyone's heard it, I'll move on. If you're on the list, good luck. Okay, so I'll move on to another item.
We're probably all going to be, you know, in the ground before this all gets approved.
Yeah, that's all right.
So do we want to adjourn until-
I dropped it, no, we got, we got four minutes, I'm going to keep going.
Okay.
There you go. So, I had an item five, this is under, on eighty-four four B, and I was looking at a new item, owner must be notified in writing with opportunity appealed, I think that goes back to the page before where they have that, I just want to make sure that they're notified of. That's under the, yeah, B, the potential historic list again.
Which page?
On eighty-four four.
The what's the number?
Right, if they're going to add somebody now, they have to notify them.
Right, but I think that's under the maintenance, I think it's there, so I think it would be redundant, to be honest with you, because B, A, maintenance of the potential historic list, it is under item B, I think. So I think, I think it's kind of redundant, I'm not sure how I put that there. Okay, I'll move on. I think it's covered under the first part of the section, under the first part, so I just saw that it was deprecated.
For noticing, that's under I, eighty-four dash, page-
Well, on page eighty-four three, additions to the list, it says that the property owner shall be notified in writing of a decision to add, but then when you go to fifty, the criteria for designating it, I guess they would have already been notified before that, so it wouldn't be the same. So then I was looking at the item, how's this on, eighty-four five, item D, assessment and consultation. So you have when required for designated historic resource, and you have when required for potential historic resource. Item D seems assessment consultation is just for the historic resource itself, so I thought maybe that should just be under a subset of that section, not under the potential list. Does that make sense?
No.
B, so you got B, C, and D. Ben is when, C is when it's required for designated historic resource, C is when it's required for potential historic resource, and then D, it talks about assessment consultation, but it's specific to the potential historic resource. So, should that be a subset of item C? Am I making sense to you?
I'm lost. So, under C is for potential historic resource?
Right.
So a permit, it's, it's, the permit is required for the resource, permit when required for a potential historic resource, the assessment and consultation for a potential historic resource.
It's specific to potential, not for both.
Right, so you're saying why isn't it under C, just part of C?
Yeah, maybe it should be a subsection of C, is all I'm saying. Or change it to a whole new sec, I don't know, just a thought.
If it stays there, the one should come out, because there's no two.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you could just look at C and D and see if they work, or whether or not they should-
Because you may, a person may look at assessment and consultation, well, it's okay.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, though, I mean, maybe-
It just seems like it fits underneath, it doesn't, it doesn't apply to both B and C, only C, so.
Could be three, C three.
Okay, well, we're right at that seven o'clock, I have a couple more items, but well-
In this?
Yes.
Well, let's just go for it.
We have two more minutes.
Get it all done.
Okay, so you got, maybe historic alteration permit has its own number, okay, historic alteration permit, alteration defined, I thought maybe it would have its own, potentially its own number, but-
What page are you on?
Still, it's eighty-four five, item E, it goes into, it's talking about the alteration permit, so maybe it has its own number, but that's fine.
Did you want clarification on a definition?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Or-
Well, no, I, do you, so the alteration, historic alteration permit for itself, does it have its own number? So it has alteration defined, I want an alteration is, so maybe that altera, and I guess where that gets into is when we start talking, and it goes on to a couple pages, I'm going to go further back, we start about rehabilitation and stuff, none of that is really defined in the process. So, on page eighty-four eight, if you go to, the structure proposed for demolition is not structurally sound despite evidence of applicants' effort to rehabilitate, and we talked about rehabilitation in the short process, but it's not really defined, like Secretary of Interior standards where you have the four different models, that part is not defined. So if we're going to say, if we're going to talk about alterations, an alteration permit, maybe it should have a little more information on the types of alterations and-
Well, this is just really clarifying that an alteration is something more significant than painting, that's how I read it, and I thought it was really appropriate to have it in there.
No, I think it's appropriate, what I'm saying, I think goes even more in depth, because we start talking about rehabilitation, which comes out of Secretary of Interior Standards terminology, and so maybe we need to define-
Rehabilitation.
What that, what that terminology, and maybe, that, I was thinking, maybe we define that alteration, it has its own little list of different types of alteration, I think we need to be more than just saying anything but painting.
Yeah, there's, we can define the four types of preservation or-
Well, that's currently not in here, right?
Okay.
So are we going to adopt those four types, that's a whole different story, the four types of preservation, because that's not really in this document.
I'm completely confused, what do you want it to do? Do you want it to define the other stuff, or what?
Saying that people know what it is, so we can't use terminology that, like rehabilitation that is one that comes out of Secretary of Interior standards, and we don't really define what that is.
And where is that used?
Under F on page eighty-four dash-
Eighty-four eight, it's under, it's under a different, it's under a few different places, actually.
Sorry, where is it? Page eighty-four dash eight, under F three, the rehabilitation or reuse of the structure is economically infeasible.
Yeah, it's also under two, and there's a couple other places, I believe.
So this is historic resource demolition permit, not the historic alteration permit.
Well, they both apply though, right? Because they both, I think somewhere we need to define what we want them to do if they're going to rehabilitate that. We're not going to allow-
But it's, the way that it's written in here, it's separate, you're talking about an alteration permit, which is one kind of permit, and then you're talking about a demolition permit, which is a different kind of permit.
Right, I'm saying that alteration permit needs to be more defined on what we expect of them in that alteration, other than just painting, so-
So you're saying that-
So if you're going to rehabilitate, you need an alteration permit.
Well, that would be true, right?
Is that what you're saying?
Well, that is true, that's a fact, right? So, if you're going to rehabilitate, you still need an alteration permit.
But that's sort of defined here.
It's not defined.
So why don't we just continue this to the end of the meeting, it'll give us all a moment to sort of think about it and figure out-
Articulate it in a better manner. Okay, so we will just take a break from our special meeting, move into our-
Just special.
All our meetings are special.
So we welcome you folks to our regularly scheduled meeting, Planning Commission meeting. And I guess for this, we'll start off again at oral communications, do we have any additions or deletions to our-
Mr. Chairman, staff is requesting a continuance of item A, which is listed on your consent calendar, and the applicant has agreed to the continuance request.
Okay. Got that? Is that it? That's it. Okay, so at this time we'll do, and we can vote on that when we get to that item, right? Okay. So at this time, where it's time for public comments, so the public comment period now is for those items that are not on tonight's agenda, so if there's anybody that would like to make a comment on an item that is not on our agenda tonight, we'll give you a few minutes to come up and speak to the Planning Commission. No, just seeing that, okay, then we'll bring that back, and we'll go to any commission comments.
Begonias festivals this weekend.
Very good, we're preparing. No begonias, but we're having a festival, right?
Yeah.
Okay, staff comments?
Staff has no comments, thank you.
That will go into approval of our minutes from our meetings on both July twenty-first and August fourth.
And I need abstain on the twenty-first.
Okay, so, I'll just break it down then, so, a motion for our Planning Commission meetings on July twenty-first.
I say I move.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with one abstain. So, and then for our regular meeting on August fourth, we have a motion.
Motion.
Motion and a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that passed. Here, we'll move to our consent calendar on item A, I guess we're looking to continue that, so I'm looking for a motion for continue item four A, twenty-two oh five, workover.
I move to continue item A.
I think there's someone in the audience who came to talk about item A, so perhaps we ought to let them know-
Is that public comment?
-when we're continuing, wherein we're continuing it.
To the October sixth meeting.
Okay, so this item will be continued at our October sixth meeting.
Okay.
And I would suggest looking at the, or giving me a call prior to the October sixth meeting to ensure that it's on there, because we're still, there's a few more pieces that need to be worked out before it'll come back to Planning Commission, so we'll make it clear on the agenda, but feel free to call City Hall.
Okay, so you understand that we're planning to see this at October sixth meeting, but you may want to call City Hall first to make sure that's going to happen, call the Community Development.
Okay, so are we?
Well, we could give you a few minutes, we're not going to talk about that item tonight, so, it's not, it's not something we're going to talk about tonight, but if you would rather speak to us now, not come back, we could try to-
I'd like to come back also.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion?
So we're going to approve the consent calendar altogether with just the modification that item A is being continued to October sixth. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'm going to pull an item on the consent calendar.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
I'm pulling item, item B for discussion.
B?
B.
Okay.
We're going to do that, you want to just-
So I will make a motion to approve item A, continuing it to October sixth, Planning Commission meeting, and item C.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That moves, and then so we have item B, now we're going to move, we can move that under our public hearings. Do you just have a question, or?
I think we could hopefully do it fairly quickly and, you know, insert it here, or whatever, whatever the chair cares to do.
Well, let's move it down to item five A, we'll do, it's going to be something we can do quick. So that closes our consent calendar with our public hearings, and under public hearings, we're going to address item B from, or B from the consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay, would you like a presentation, or is there questions?
I don't think we need a presentation. My, my concern about this application is that when going on the applicant's website, it appears that they give day classes, and it seems to me as though that center and that area are very impacted with parking already, and so I think the night classes work out very well. Is the applicant here for this? Okay, so I think the night classes work out really well, and I would like to add a condition of approval that says that they will only be holding night classes, because that's what they're saying, but I'm kind of wondering why they're holding day classes now and they're, they're going only tonight here, so maybe the applicant could-
Sure, and I will clarify that they were requesting weekend workshops once a month, on Saturday and Sunday.
And I think weekends would be all right, based on the other uses there, I don't think the center will have that parking, so come on, you want to open.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing if you want to give it, so.
Hi, good evening. My name's Casey Contreras, I'm the program coordinator for the college.
Elizabeth Jones, who's the founder and director, is out of town, so I'm here on behalf of COBA. COBA's been, since nineteen ninety-seven, it's been around for nineteen years. Traditionally, it's always been night classes. There was a one-off, we're on a trimester program, and there was a one-off last spring where we had a day class. But largely, the program is designed for people who work during the day, so the classes are always offered in the evening in that five to nine-thirty slot.
So would it be all right with you if we put a condition in there that your, your classes were held in the evenings and on weekends only?
Yes, of course.
Right, thank you.
So with that, we'll look for a-
I move approval of the application with the additional hours under a condition.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, now we're gonna move into, which is item A, one oh nine Central Avenue, so staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you is an application for a design permit, variance, conditional use permit, and coastal development permit, for in addition to an historic single-family home located at one oh nine Central Avenue. The applicant is proposing a second-story addition and a basement under the back half of the residence. The property is located in the R-one, single-family residential zoning district within the Depot Hill neighborhood. The existing cottage is historic. The home is considered local vernacular and was built in nineteen oh five. Staff contracted Leslie Dill of Archives and Architecture LLC to conduct a historic review of the proposal. The historian provided comments and suggestions to the applicant in order to properly preserve the historic structure and comply with the Secretary of Interior standards. The character-defining features of the historic home at one oh nine Central include compact rectangular footprint of the main wing, the low-one-story massing, full-width front gabled roof, recessed front porch, large double-hung focal windows at the front, boxed eaves and wall fascia, flatboard trim at windows and doors, horizontal woodlapped siding and flat corner boards, scalloped shingle siding at the front gable, square wood louvered vents, and wood window sash and trim. The applicant is proposing to construct a new foundation under the entire home and add a three hundred twenty-square-foot basement, shown in blue, below the existing home with access at the rear. The new basement has no internal access, no two-twenty plugs, and will be utilized only for storage. Staff do not see any indication that the basement will be used as living space. The applicant is also proposing a six hundred tw, six hundred ten-square-foot second-story addition to the existing home, and that's shown in gray. The existing garage and landscaping is not proposed to be altered as a part of this remodel. So this slide shows the proposed upper and lower, lower floor plans. The applicant is proposing to remodel the interior of the existing lower floor. The darkened area of the upper floor plan shows the area under the roof that will not include habitable space. The second-story addition will contain a master bedroom and bathroom, sitting area, stairwell, and forty-eight square feet of second-story deck space at the rear. The backyard area is currently screened from neighboring properties with the existing detached garage and mature landscaping. Thus, the proposed second-story deck space is not considered to be a privacy concern by staff. The applicant is proposing to add one hundred forty-four square feet of habitable space within the existing roof area at the front of the home, that's outlined in red. The front exterior of the home remains preserved within the proposed remodel. The applicant is proposing to demolish the shed roof on the rear and add a four hundred sixty-six-square-foot second-story above, which is shown to the left of the red outline. Here you can see a cross-section of the front elevation, which shows the area of the existing single-story pitched roof space to be remodeled and used for living space. The next few slides show existing and proposed elevations of the historic home. This slide specifically shows the front elevation as seen off of Central Avenue. The applicant is proposing to use six-inch horizontal siding for the addition area in order to differentiate the new work from the existing eight-inch horizontal siding. Here is the south-side elevation, existing on top, proposed below. Here is a cross-section from the south-side elevation, showing the internal layout in relation to the elevation. Central Avenue is to the right, and the rear yard is to the left of this image. Here's the north-side elevation. And here is the rear elevation. So this slide shows a survey of the existing historic home. The historic structure is non-conforming in terms of setbacks. The municipal code requires a four-foot side yard setback and fifteen-foot front yard setback, while the existing home is setback just one foot four inches from the north-side property line and eleven foot seven inches from the front property line. So here is another image of the site plan with the property lines highlighted in blue. The applicant, again, is proposing to construct a second-story addition, shown in gray, at that same one foot five-inch north-side yard setback as the existing historic home. The second-story addition does not meet the required six-foot side yard setback for second-story additions, and thus requires a variance. In addition, the applicant is requesting a variance to height to build a twenty-six-foot-tall residence when the code allows twenty-five, and a variance to the allowed eighty percent limit for structural alterations to existing non-conforming properties. The planning commission may grant a variance when it finds that because of a special circumstance applicable to the property, the strict application of this title is found to deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in this same area, and two, that the grant of a variance permit would not constitute a grant of a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the area. So the special circumstances applicable to the property is that the existing home is historic, and therefore, the location of an addition must be cited appropriately to maintain the historic integrity of the structure. Historic resource is protected within the municipal code, general plan, and under the California Environmental Quality Act. Historic preservation is a priority within the city. As shown on this slide, the general plan supports the preservation and maintenance of historic homes and the application of the Secretary of Interior standards. In accordance with Ms. Dill's historic review, the applicant was guided not to modify the front of the structure, and that any new addition must be setback far enough as to not visually dominate the existing historic design in the front. Ms. Dill submitted a Secretary of the Interior Standards review of the proposed rehabilitation and addition project, which concluded that the proposal would adequately meet the Secretary of Interior standards. The variance request to go beyond the eighty percent limit for allowed structural alterations and maintain the home's existing non-conforming location is preferred for historic preservation. Therefore, staff supports this variance request. Now we will discuss the variance to the side yard setbacks. This slide shows views of the existing home from Central Avenue. On the top is a view of the home looking at the north side of the property. The bottom is a view of the home looking at the south side of the property. As you can see, the south side of the home is readily visible from Central Avenue, while the north side is mostly hidden by a row of vegetation. The new addition is proposed within the north side yard setback to preserve the location and appearance of the historic structure. When designing the addition, the applicant focused on the preservation of the more visible south side, specifically the appearance of the steep sloping roof to the south, and that's shown with an arrow. To do this, the second-story addition would be within the required north side yard setback and requires a variance. Sorry, it appears the PowerPoint has frozen. The Depot Hill neighborhood consists primarily of single-family residences, which, like the subject property, are located on small properties and generally contain reduced yard setback areas. In accordance with Ms. Dill's historic review, the proposal visually maintains the historically significant south-side sloped roof. If the second-story addition area and interior stairwell were reversed and constructed closer to the south side of the property, the historically significant south-side roof line would be altered and may compromise the historic integrity of the home. In addition, the proposed remodel and addition work will not max out the property in terms of allowed floor area ratio. The project was thoughtfully designed in order to create additional living space while maintaining existing open space on the property and preserving the historic nature of the home. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the variance to side yard setbacks of the second-story addition. Now I will discuss the variance to the height. The applicant is proposing a new foundation and basement below the existing twenty-two-foot-tall home. In order to accommodate the height of their proposal, the applicant is requesting a variance to height standards to allow the hipped roof in the rear to be twenty-six feet tall when the limit is twenty-five. The wall plate within this area, the second story, is proposed to be eight feet, with the vaulted ceiling extending an additional five feet within the pitched roof. Staff recommends that the applicant reduce the height by one foot in order to be compliant with height limitations. The architectural historian previously supported the differentiation in the new roof from the existing roof area. By reducing the height, the roof would continue to be differentiated while complying with the zone height of twenty-five feet. Staff recommends the planning commission approve application sixteen dash zero two six as conditioned with a one-foot reduction to height. And I'm available to answer any questions, the architect is also here as well.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions for staff? Okay, so we have the applicant here, you want to come up and?
Please. Hello, commissioners and staff, my name's Mark Kane. My wife, Maureen, can't be here tonight. We put this project together before you, and our architect couldn't be here tonight, but we have Daniel Silvernail stepping in, and between the two of us, hopefully, we can answer any questions or concerns.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant right now?
If I may introduce myself.
Sure.
I am Daniel Silvernail, architect. Dennis Norton and I recently formed partnership, Silvernail Norton Architects Associate, Associates. We've worked on a couple of projects together. I'm kind of coming in to represent the project as best I can. I obviously didn't design it, but I've been brought up to speed, and I'm a fully qualified architect, and I can certainly extemporize any considerations that you wanna speak to, and I'll leave on that note, and let us carry on.
Thank you. Okay, so any questions for the applicant or the architect?
Am I reading the parking arrangement correctly here? That you've got three parking spaces, but they're like triple tandem parking spaces?
That's correct. They're one in front of the other, not tandem.
Oh, so do you?
I have a driveway that's fifteen feet seven inches wide, and then I have a garage in the back, yeah.
So we call that tandem?
You wanna?
I think that's what we call tandem.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not understanding, is this?
It's a long, it's a long-
They're only required to have two spaces.
Are they, it's two thousand and seventy-four square feet?
No, I'm just looking at what it says required under parking. It says two spaces, one covered and one uncovered.
Is that correct for over two thousand square feet? So what the plans show?
Well, the plans look like they might be different than the staff report.
Yeah, so the, the total floor area ratio of the proposal was one thousand nine hundred forty-nine square feet.
Right.
And the residences from one thousand five hundred and one up to two thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Two spaces are required, one covered, one uncovered.
I guess I was thrown off by the plans that say it's two thousand and seventy-one square feet.
So there's an exclusion for basements as well, so that's why the square footage totals on the plans are not completely accurate.
And I don't know if the front, front porch-
Covered porch.
Yeah, the covered, a covered porch, there's exclusions for that as well, so.
So anyway, so you're only required to have two spaces, and you have three tandem spaces, is what I'm getting out of all this.
Correct.
So it's good.
Yeah.
But only two are required, so that's good. Okay, any, any, anything else, Ed?
Well, I can jump to the, the question of the foot, the height difference. Have you guys looked at reducing it, and what would that mean?
Well, we're, what we're talking about is a nine-foot section, and it would impact, instead of a nice pitched interior roof, it, we'd have to do something, we'd have to cut it off, give it a haircut. And from the, view from the south side, everything's a pitch, and then you have it cut off at a foot, but.
Yeah, I think I would-
Could staff present the street elevation?
I, I think I would be inclined to support the staff's position, 'cause I don't think it's a large spans of roof that they're gonna be reducing down.
Right, I'm just asking cosmetically and, and what the impact is of, of cutting that off, that's what I wanted the answer to.
Yeah, I think it's in the vaulted ceiling inside the bedroom, so there will be sort of a-
Would it be possible for staff to present the, the elevation from the street? So the portion of the roof that's in question is that, that section right there. That's approximately eight feet long. Now, that geometry is a result of following the pitch, the existing pitch of the existing historic structure. As you can see, it, it describes a certain, a certain pitch, a certain rise, and to be consistent with that, you follow the same line in that rear gable, and then you continue that same line upwards to its natural consequence. That is the natural architectural solution to the design problem. That's what naturally results if you work with the existing historic structure. If you're, you respect the structure. It is possible to break the pitch and go with a different pitch, that is entirely possible. It would wreak havoc on the interior, for one thing. For another, it's not really speaking to the existing building. Usually, an architect wants to, you know, work in harmony with what he has presented. That's the natural instinct of an architect. Work with what's there and continue in the same aesthetic. If you break from the existing aesthetic, you, the result is something that's not harmonious, it's a little disjunct. You know, you see these vernacular buildings out there in, in the landscape. They're a little jarring to the eye. It's much more harmonious, it's much more beautiful to see something that's actually working. It's all working together harmoniously. My point, my argument for not modifying it is, that little section is set and in, consistent with historian's determinations, set way back from the street. So although in elevation, it looks like it's a problem, or like it's going to be evident, in fact, it is so far back from the street, and the roof is so steep, and your eye level is so low, that even if it were lowered a foot, you wouldn't hardly perceive it. You'd really hardly perceive it, unless you were maybe flying twenty feet in the air. But people don't see things that way. So I think it's such a small, minor thing to ask for in terms of the har, the architectural harmony of the house, and the, and actually, the harmony of capitola architecture, to just allow it to be the way it is. Just allow the design to remain. That, that is what I would advocate.
I have a further question. What is the havoc that you're talking about inside? Could you explain that a little bit more?
Well, the, that, the, first of all, the lower floor right now, since it's historic, it's actually a nine-and-a-half-foot ceiling height. So the, the client is already, in a way, penalized by that, right? 'Cause it's over tall.
He's getting lots of exceptions, 'cause it's historic, too.
True. But the fact that it's nine feet high pushes the whole second floor- But the fact that it's nine feet high pushes the whole second floor up a foot and a half higher than it normally would be.
So what would that ceiling height be at both roof levels?
I'm answering. The second floor plate height is eight feet, which is a standard plate height, what any home would enjoy. If, and the ceiling is vaulted. So if you lower that vault, the space becomes more...
By one foot.
Constricted. Right, but it also...
Or you could just...
You have to take that through all the way into the stairwell because it's all one roof. So what you do at that, at that highest point has ramifications all the way through the second floor, including the stairwell.
Mm-hmm.
Now, another solution would be to just chop it off, just truncate it. But really? No, we're doing architecture here. We're not, we're not... The intent of the regulations of the ordinances is not to create buildings that are not beautiful. It's to create buildings that are more beautiful.
Okay, any other questions for... I have a question, a staff though. So you have listed on here that the height is a variance, but in fact, this would not be a variance for historical height, up to 27 feet. Is that true?
So that exception only applies if the home meets side yard setbacks, and this property does not meet side yard setbacks, so it would be a variance?
So, okay, so the 27 feet that the planning commission is allowed to do if it's historical, it's also based on a setback?
It's based on if it meets, I believe it's front and side yard, but I know side yard is one of them, and the side yard setback is not met in this proposal.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant, real quick?
I'm just going to speak out loud so I can clarify this in my own mind, and if I say, if I misspeak, then I want you to correct me. I'm not really good at reading plans all the time. So I just want to clarify, there is currently no place in the roof line where it's not a pitched roof line. There's no flat spot today.
That's correct.
And what, what I think, I'm understanding is that that point, which is too high, in order for it not to be too high, you would either have to change the pitch or make a flat spot.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, that was my understanding.
Okay. Mark, do you have something?
Please. One of the reasons why we undertook this is so we could live in this house. It's a one-bedroom house now, and it's going to be a one-bedroom house when we're finished. And all the work is toward the back, and my wife isn't here, so she'd kick me if I didn't say that a lot of, we're looking forward to having a beautiful bedroom. And part of that is to have a symmetry, and we'd lose that with the, with one, with the haircut.
Okay. Okay, thank you. You guys, you can sit down. And we'll open this. Anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, if not, then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'll start. So there's a lot of moving parts here in this, and also remember that the, our ordinance is going to change in terms of non-conforming. There's a lot of moving parts here, so, but I think when you take it in context and go out there and look, and we didn't have really good plans showing the neighborhood, you know, both sides of the street, but when you go look at it, it really looks like it fits as designed to me. And so, given the, obviously, the historic values that we're talking about and the fact that there's nothing about what they're planning to build that impacts the neighborhood in any way, in my opinion, I support it as, as proposed.
I'm going to jump in on that as well. The understanding that the changes that would be required to give that foot back are really important to me because the pitch of the roof line and the symmetry that you see really is important. And having lived with a flat spot on the roof and the maintenance that that requires, I would not be opposed to allowing that extra foot, given that the historic nature of the house, we're protecting a lot of things. And I think that it's, it would create more of a hardship to give it a haircut or change the roof pitch than that one foot is worth.
Well, I'm going to lose, but I disagree. I think that this particular project is getting an awful lot of exceptions as far as setbacks and, you know, how it's set up. And I don't think that lowering that back portion of the roof by a foot, because you can keep the same pitch and, you know, sort of give it a haircut up there, I think it would work fine. And where it's located, it's not going to be a big visual problem. And, you know, on this one, I think the staff's right to ask for it to be cut off. So, you know, that's just the way I'm going.
Okay, go.
Well, I first want to thank you for taking such loving, good care of this beautiful little house for so long. It's, you've really done an incredible thing with it, and it's a joy to look at. And I do support all of the variances that, I have a problem with the height. I have a problem with us inching up in height over our neighborhoods, even by a little bit. And I have a problem with the argument that it's so far back and it's so small that you won't be able to see it. And if that's the case, then changing that pitch won't be seen either. So I'm not sure that that's a really good argument.
I see it from my bed.
Right, right. And we've all, you know, I had to maintain my, in my historic, my older home, I had to maintain the height. You know, a lot of us have had to maintain height. And I, I think there's, there's a give and take, you know, where you can get a lot of variances, but maybe not every single one of your variances. And if, and if this prevails, if all of the variances prevail, which I don't have a huge problem with, I would rather see a little bit more, a few more, one or two more findings that address how much they have gone towards making this remodel conducive to the neighborhood. In other words, they haven't maxed out the, the square footage, the far of the property, which I think is really important. It's something we want to see in our community, and it's something we want to acknowledge and that the staff can go back to and say, all right, future applicant, who you want all of these things, but you're also trying to max out your whole property, you're probably not going to get that because you didn't give as much as these particular applicants gave. So, you know, I can see the, the argument for this applicant having given a lot and getting things in return. And I do agree that visually, I don't think this is, this particular application of another foot is going to make a huge impact. I just worry that we're doing it here and there and here and there and giving these variances, and I want to make sure that we make correct findings for them if we're going to give them. And findings that we can look back on and really show future applicants that they did five different things to make this property look good, not just, you know, make the front facade look good.
Well, I think this is exactly why the planning commission has an opportunity to take a look at these type of homes, and this is a great example of working with a historical project that's on our list that has more, it's actually a D and an E. Because I could tell you pretty much every house that's in the city that's been given a haircut, and they drive me absolutely crazy. Architecturally, it's like we're making a point. This is my personal opinion. To me, the foot would stand out, adding the foot would stand out much less than having a haircut because as I went by that, I would realize every time. And then, just from a maintenance, and I used to be a sheet metal guy in my former life, trying to keep that from leaking and all the problems that, to me, it just, it literally doesn't make sense in this application for the small area. I think the neighbors have shown that they, we've received some letters, and other neighbors have sent that they're okay with the plans as designed. I think it's a great addition. This family did another house on Central that was a historic house, and they did a beautiful job with that one, and, you know, made it look like it belonged to the neighborhood. And so for me, I could support it as designed. But I guess that leaves us at a point of...
Yeah, so on the height issue, just reiterate the point that if it weren't for the side yard setback issue, the height wouldn't even be an issue. So it's kind of the interplay of several different factors that make this the, an odd situation we're in where there's the possibility of having to take a foot off the top. I mean, we do really promote that for historic structures.
Well, it sounds like they're going to get what they want.
Well, I know, but I want you to vote for it.
You know, there are a lot of, normally, there are a number of what would be red flags for me on this house. But I agree, I think they did an exceptionally nice job. I mean, normally, having that rear second-story deck, you know, I would say absolutely no way. But, you know, the neighbors say it's okay. They did a nice job on the whole project itself. Personally, I think they could look at their design and how they've, how they have set it up and, you know, not need the height variance if they want to. They just have a particular design they want to achieve. So, you know, I think it's fine for me to vote against it, but they're, you know, they're going, they're going to get what they, they want anyway.
Okay, well, then I guess I'll ask for a motion to...
I'd like to move approval with an additional, an addition or a couple of additions to finding B. If that's the appropriate, if staff feels that's the appropriate finding to put the kinds of things I'm talking about, which are, you know, less floor area ratio than they could go for, the, the problems with the side yard, you know, setbacks.
They exceed the parking requirements?
They exceed the parking requirements.
Maybe.
Barely.
Well, barely, but they sort of exceed the parking requirements.
Is that under the conditions of approval?
No, those are the findings.
Under findings, I got, okay.
And would it be B?
Probably E.
E? The grant of variance would not constitute a...
You know, the problem with that, those kind of findings is it's, you want to send a message to future people to do the kinds of things you want, but it sort of says, well, I mean, you can mitigate nonviolations by doing other...
But I do agree you can. I mean, that's what we want. We want to maintain these historic structures, and we're willing to give people as much as we possibly can. And when somebody comes in with a fairly reasonable, you know, I mean, they can't move the building to the north, they can't, you know, there's a lot they can't do, and they've recognized that.
The requirements for a variance really don't go that far. To make the specific requirements, and the fact that you're a good guy doesn't satisfy.
Well, and one of the findings is this Secretary of Interior Standards, which drives me crazy, to see the difference siding that makes it stand out like it's a, that just, I just, for me...
I agree with that.
I'm not on board with that, but, so I guess, I guess we're looking for a motion to approve it with your findings?
You started with your motion. Why don't you finish it?
I did, and I wanted to...
We would suggest findings B and D that we could apply.
And D is in dog.
B and D, yeah.
And D is in dog?
Yes.
Okay. And what would you put?
We, we can add the floor area ratio to B, the comments about the integrity of the neighborhood, and then within D, the findings for the side yard setback and talking about the unique characteristics of the site and the historic.
And providing more parking than necessary?
That would probably go under B.
Okay. I'd like those three put in where my, my motion stands.
So we have a motion with additional findings? Did you, you're going to say I second? Is that...
No, I'm, I'm just watching Ed, and I don't want Ed to not vote for...
No, no, I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay, cool.
I want to see it get approved.
Okay, so we have a motion, and Ed second? Commissioner?
Is the applicant okay with that? I mean, it doesn't really make any difference.
No.
What are you talking about? Don't ask him that question.
I understand it correctly. This is simply bolstering the position of...
Yes, the argument for it, yes.
Of the commission in favor of it.
Right.
And so that if there's ever a look back, it'll, it will pass the sniff test.
For future projects.
No, that is not, that's not the purpose of it. It's so that future applicants will look back and say, oh, this is what I have to give in order to get that.
I understand.
Okay, great.
And, yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed?
One.
The motion passes four to one with Commissioners Smith, Ortiz, Newman, and Welch in favor, and Commissioner Westman voting no.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll, excuse me, thank you. Good luck on your project. So with that, we'll move on to item B, 4100 Auto Plaza Drive. Staff report.
We're going to pass around the materials board while I provide my presentation. Before you this evening is a design permit and a sign permit for the Subaru dealership at 4100 Auto Plaza Drive. This is a remodel of the dealership. The addition is 50 square feet for an iconic tower on the front of the building, but otherwise no change to the footprint. There are some exterior modifications that I'll walk you through. In this slide, you'll see the existing site plan, and this is showing proposed. So within the proposed update, and I'll zoom in to different areas so you can see it more clearly, but one change is along the frontage. As you can see, the, along the front of the, if we go back, the, along the parking, the landscaping jots in and out along the front parking, and it's difficult to manage the parking of cars, and the applicant is hoping to straighten that landscape area more. And you can see that in the green. So it'll be relined to meet the, the parking requirements, but also just creating a cleaner line along the frontage. And I should also mention here that the proposal includes new grass within this area, but the applicant is here tonight and is willing to discuss changes to the landscape plan should the planning commission desire, and even a discussion on turf if desired. And here are a few photos of the existing conditions today. As you can see, there are trees along this section that are spaced and the existing grass. Now I'll zoom into the actual dealership and walk you through the changes. The changes are at the entryway along the front facade of the building. One change is a new ramp that would go up to the front door, and it meets ADA access. Also, a new entry landing with steps to walk out the front door that'll be centered on the building. And the third larger change is the slate icon tower, so it'll have slate rock on the iconic tower and a new Subaru sign. Within the parking, there's new ADA spaces created. There's currently 221 spaces with 72 customer spaces. Within the proposed, there's, this is decreased by four spaces. There's 217 proposed and 68 customer spaces, three of which are ADA spaces. Our code isn't specific on the requirements for parking. It is, exceeds the retail component greatly, but this is an auto dealership, so cars are moving around a lot. But having been out to the site and observed it, it seems as if there is adequate parking during store hours currently, so. Next, we'll go through the different, the changes to the front of the building. So here's existing today. Actually, that Mazda sign has been taken down because the Mazda dealership has moved out at this point, and the whole site will be taken over by Subaru. Within the changes, there's the slate icon tower on the front of the building next to the entryway. Here is a new Santa Cruz sign that will replace that Mazda dealership sign. And, and this is a blow-up of the new wall sign that will be on the slate icon tower. So it's just the Subaru logo on that. Next, this is the existing elevation, although you would not see the Mazda sign right now. That came down. And what Subaru is proposing is to remove that sign altogether anyway, so just leaving, they'll be updating the Subaru signs with the new colors. The finishes for the remodel include upgrading the stucco exterior siding along the walls and adding a composite metal panel and fascia under the roof overhang. And as I stated, the only addition to the square footage is the 50 square feet for the icon tower. Within the sign regulations, you're, most of these signs are just upgrades of existing signs, except for one. You're allowed one wall sign or monument sign per business, the maximum of one square foot per linear foot of the building. So within this building, there's 110 feet of frontage, and that would allow Subaru to have one sign that's 110 square feet. Subaru is requesting a site location exception, and within a, and they're... Subaru is requesting a site location exception, and within a, and they're requesting this due to the location on a dead-end street, and that is one situation that a site location exception may be requested by an applicant. The findings the planning commission must make is that the exception is required to maintain competitive with the similar businesses in the area, and that there's no adverse impacts on the character and integrity of the site and neighborhood. This is a rendering of the Subaru dealership, and here you can see the new signs. They're actually not exactly accurate, where you see service sign and the Subaru sign, those would be switched on the left-hand side. But this is the, they break down the separation between the wall signs. It really works with the architecture rather than having one sign that's 110 square feet. Between the signs, they actually are just at 110 square feet when you do the measurement of all the signs combined. So with that, staff has written in the staff report findings of support for the exception for the challenged site due to site visibility. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the 4100 Auto Plaza Drive application for a design permit and sign permit as conditioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions for staff? Is the applicant here, and would you like to make a presentation?
Good evening, Peter Ragnall, the architect, and I'm here with Dave Spencer, who's the general manager of Subaru, and we're happy to answer any questions you have. I do have one comment. The landscaping area in front was planning being a turf, which is, you know, a synthetic material and not a real material.
Okay.
So it's, takes little or no water to maintain it, and I think that's where we're trying to head with, you know, reduce the water usage of the site.
Great, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, well, then I'll bring it back for, oh, well, I guess I should open up to the public. Anybody here from the public that would like to talk about this item?
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Pat Trimble, Loma Vista Estates. Loma Vista is a neighbor of Subaru, and we met with the Subaru folks. They shared their vision of an improved dealership, better ADA, better appearance, accessibility, lots of nice changes. Loma Vista Estates owners associations in full support of Subaru application. Changes will benefit our community, and please approve the Subaru dealership. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you for coming to our meetings and giving us your insight. Appreciate that. Okay, so I'll close it for public comment, bring it back to the commission?
I think it's great. I think it's nice to see that they're going to spend money and reinvest in this dealership, and that it's gonna stay in Capitola. The one thing I would like to say as far as the landscaping area where they're going to put the turf is to put in a condition that they can work with staff, and if they want to come up with some other alternatives rather than, you know, just have the artificial turf all along there, that would be fine with me. I'm not saying that they have to, but it seems like there might be some more creative or innovative solutions to break it up a little bit since it is a long strip going down there, and perhaps they could just work with staff on that. And with that added condition, I'd be ready to approve it.
I just have a question about the word Santa Cruz. I guess your business title is Santa Cruz and not Capitola. I'd sure love to see the name Capitola on that building instead of Santa Cruz, but can't be...
Sounds like an argument we had in 1985.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna lose that one. Seems like it would be confusing for your customers, but I guess we all find our way there anyway.
As long as we know where their revenue goes, we're okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the project with the one added condition that they can work on the front landscaping area with the staff.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go, thank you very much, sir. Okay, with that, it brings us to, maybe we want to save our director's, we want to do a director's report now, or you want to save it till?
I can do it now, it's pretty brief.
Okay.
Next Thursday at the regularly scheduled city council meeting, we will have another zoning code discussion. It's gonna be focused on village parking and in-lu parking fee policy. This follows up on our meeting, I think, last month where you wanted to get some council direction, so we'll be seeking that next week. And then we also have special meetings scheduled for September 15th and the 29th, and it's very possible that we'll also have an item on the regular agenda on September 22nd, but that's not confirmed yet.
So, I'm sorry, September 8th?
September 8th is the regular agenda. We'll be discussing just village parking and in-lu parking fee policy.
That starts at what time?
Seven o'clock. On the 15th and 29th, there are special meetings beginning at six o'clock. Council has a regular meeting on the 22nd. We're not confirmed to have any zoning discussion that evening, but we may, depending on what other items and city business we need to cover.
I won't be able to be on the 29th, but...
That's all I have for you this evening.
That's for the city council.
That's for the city council, the planning commission.
Our next planning commission meeting's the 19th, right?
19th for the next... These are, I'm sorry, did I completely miss that whole thing?
Yeah.
The 8th is the council?
Right.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
The 8th is the council, 15th is the council, 29th is the council.
And the 19th is the planning commission.
September 19th.
Did I miss notice about the 19th? Did you send something out?
I don't think she's...
It's in the staff report, I believe.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Just, I have one question regarding the zoning code changes. I understand that council's reviewing all of our stuff, and they're not changing a lot, but they are making some minor changes. Are those gonna come back to us as they make them, or are they gonna come back to us at the end, or how's that gonna work?
So at the end, we'll come back, we'll report all the changes to the planning commission to the extent that they're substantial. I think you'll have an opportunity to comment and forward some other type of recommendation should you choose. So you will see that again.
Okay. Commissioner, comments?
I have one comment. I'm wondering if on our agenda, under oral communications, we want to put something there that says that, you know, it's three minutes, and certainly, if the chair wants to let somebody go longer, they can, but it seems like, just so people have an understanding that it's our expectation, we're only gonna have a three-minute presentation under oral communications.
Yeah, we could do that, I guess. Other than you were talking, you're not talking about like...
I think the council may do that.
We can try. I know that the city council has had major challenges in making changes to their templates. They have lost entire templates, so we'll try.
The planning commission is, I can always, I can talk to the city manager and the city clerk, and we can look into making that change. I think we'd want to be consistent.
I can veritably confirm, just say, normally, we hold this to three minutes ahead, just to, and then, but when an applicant's here or someone like that...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just saying that, you know, when someone comes in under oral communications, because we haven't had it lately, but there have been times when we've had somebody to spend, you know, 10, 15 minutes going on about something that's not on our agenda, we can't comment on it, and, you know, if it is an item that we really need to discuss, we can always say we want to agendize that so we can have a discussion about it.
Yeah.
And I want the people to know how long they have as well, and they don't think that we're cutting them off by saying, you only get three minutes.
Okay. Makes sense. And the other communication I have is, thank you for getting back to me on the property. I think also, Commissioner Westman, you talked about the property on the Monterey and Park Place, that, the second story, so...
Right.
The staff has looked into that, and they're going to address that. I guess the question was about a complaint, but you can consider my inquiry as a complaint, I guess, to discuss it with them. Is that, you have something?
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna take that as an official code enforcement case. Our intent was to contact the owner, remind them that they were not permitted to have a rooftop deck, and seek their cooperation.
Okay, and then if that doesn't happen, then we'll...
Then I would recommend that somebody file a formal complaint so that we can enforce. But at this point, it'll just kind of be an effort to cooperate.
Yeah, then we can, then we'll just both file it. Okay, thank you, I'll get back to the other people. So, any other commission? You guys act like you're getting ready to go, we still have more work to do.
No, no, no.
That's right, you do, we've got more work to do.
With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn our regularly scheduled meeting.
So, can we get a potty break in between?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, okay, cool.
Second to a motion adjournment?
Second, yes.
And so, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll meet October 6th, our next regularly scheduled meeting, planning commission meeting. And with that, we'll take a five-minute recess before we finish up, and I don't have a lot left, so I'd probably go quick.
and that, the definition of a historic alteration permit, and also different types of alterations, and whether or not they should be defined, such as...
So, I guess I'm looking for some consistency. So if there, is it really an alteration, or is it a rehabilitation of a historic building? What would the term be? Because then if we go over to the part where we're talking about demolition, we call it findings for approval, we start saying, if it's, if it's not, where am I looking at now? I lost my own place.
The demolition is F3, it's after that.
Yeah, that's it. So two and three, yeah, it talks about rehabilitating it, the building if it's unable to be rehabilitated. So I'm just looking for consistency in terminology. Are we calling it in the, under 84-4, the potential historic resource, and we're talking about the, whoops, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. I'm gonna confuse you even more.
TJ, I mean, I'm not seeing that there's a real, they're talking about a little bit different thing. The alteration refers to exterior changes. And the rehabilitation that would justify a demolition, it's not rehabilitations and peaceful, would not just be exterior alterations, it might be a lot more than that. So, you know, there are, there may be different, quite a bit different standards for those two sections.
Okay.
There's different types of preservation and rehabilitation, so I think for the purposes of this finding...
Yeah, no, I understand there's, under Secretary of Interior Standards, there's different designations, but we're not using that here, right?
The foundation, for example.
Right, some do not...
Say, you can demolish this historic structure because it is not feasible to repair the foundations sufficiently so that it can meet all the standards it needs to meet. But that wouldn't be, that wouldn't entail the alteration concept that's...
Well, I guess, I guess if we're gonna have, because alterations can be, alterations under, it can be rehabilitated, I guess, in a sense. So you could rehabilitate a historic structure under Secretary of Interior Standards. So are we just putting everything under alterations, and if it can't be, alterations can't be done, we're talking about demolition, is that the...
So, within this F3, I think it's very clear that it's, that the rehabilitation or reuse of the structure is not economically infeasible. We could define rehabilitation to...
That may work, yeah.
We could add that to the definition.
Because that rehabilitation isn't used under the alteration, or when you're trying to preserve it, right? That term's not used there, so...
You can, you can rehabilitate without altering. Right.
But once, okay, so I might get that, but that would still come through a process through us, and it, I'm just, I guess, asking for some, asking for clarification on what that would be for those, the people that may be going through that process, would understand what they're trying to do.
Okay, and I, we have, if you go to page 84-5...
Right.
We, under F, exceptions for in-kind minor replacements, that could... Doesn't confuse it with.
Yeah, so it doesn't confuse it with the other one. Just a little wording tweak there, I think, would would help.
I'm good with that.
Well, we were going to make a different change to that, possibly combining C and D.
Right.
It would be better, I think.
Yeah, I was just looking for a way of, you know, identifying that that is specific to.
Yeah, and that's the best way to do it.
And I'll check with the other chapters just to make sure we haven't used when required for all of them. Because if that were the case, we should keep it consistent.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that when required, when required.
Okay.
Other sections, but I could be wrong.
That's all I had.
Any others?
So we did agree that you were going to look at rewriting on the demolition of historic resources, the review authority and straighten that out.
Yes. So we'll bring planning commission recommendation forward.
And, you know, I don't think we address it in this zoning ordinance, but at some point, we are sort of going to have to address the whole list of potential historic properties and how that works. And I don't know, you know, if we just ask the council to consider allocating funding in the next budget cycle. Won't happen in two thousand, you know, sixteen, seventeen, but in like June of two thousand seventeen.
To review the whole list?
To review the whole list.
I think at some point, once zoning is starting to wind down, I would like to go back before the council, kind of give them the department's work program while we're working on what's in the queue and get some kind of priority direction from them on where we should spend our time.
Yeah.
And I'll let you know when that's going to happen. And I'll give the same presentation as the planning commission preceding that, your recommendations.
And it seems like those kinds of future things should be, should wait until the new council is seated.
Yes, at this stage, yeah. Because the budget was just passed, you know, we're going to be fully consumed for the near term. So there's not a lot of point in talking about it, I don't think, right now. So I think you're right, probably after the new year sometime.
We're going to have new planning commissioners and new council. You can start all this.
Start over again.
No, I don't think Gail can leave us.
She can very easily.
So we want to move on to the public notice and hearings? See if we can get this.
Yes, so what we have left this evening is public notice and hearing and then the glossary. It's now eight fifteen. Is there a certain cutoff time that you'd like to suggest?
Don't you think we can get this done before nine?
I'm going to try to get it through. Okay, so public notice and hearing, the red lines are included. A lot of this work was also done by Linda Friday for getting this correct with all her.
This is my job.
This is her job and a big part of it in this chapter. So she helped just with the red lines and.
I had one request.
Yes.
And that is, I think, anything we are not required to put in a newspaper by state law, we should not advertise in the newspaper. I mean, you can if you want to, if, you know, you're going to have a special work session or that kind of thing. But I don't, I think there are so few people who read the public notices in the newspapers anymore. They're outrageously expensive. We shouldn't put anything in the newspaper we don't have to.
Waste the money, I agree.
I agree.
Yes, state requires variances, conditional use permits. And I think it's from the coastal commission, but we require coastal permits.
That should be changed. Probably the newspaper lobby is pretty
Yeah.
Strong on that. But that should just go on somebody's website.
Yeah, well, personally, I think newspapers are going to go away. And it would be nice to wean the community to looking at the website or giving us emails if you want to receive public notices or, you know, I don't know what the answer is going to be, but something.
I had a question about F. Let's see, page, well, I didn't get this in my packet, so I'm going on my old copy and I'm hoping nothing got changed.
It all got changed.
It all got changed. Oh, dear. Well, I did notice, though, that Commissioner Newman had the same thing. It's talking about blind, aged, and disabled communities wherever. Sorry?
That's the state.
Why just drive through? But we have to just do it. We just do it. Okay, never mind.
And how do we reach out to them? Well, some of them are here at the meeting, so.
Yes. Wait, that, that one.
I know the aged.
Rich and I have had a very quick acknowledgement that when the zoning code goes through and if we change drive-throughs, we will need to do that. We have not, I mean, we can send something to the senior center for aged.
So do they have a definition of aged? I want to know if I'm there yet or not.
Yeah.
Am I a minority?
How do you incorporate the aged community? How do we do that?
My thought, honestly, was seriously, send it to the senior.
Senior center.
The senior center. Send it to the local, I'm sorry, you probably know really well, who is in Santa Cruz that you guys often support the blind?
Council, oh, Vista Center for the Blind and Visually impaired.
AARP. Get it in the AARP newsletter. Everybody will hear about it.
It's just make some kind of effort.
Yeah.
Okay. I almost hate to bring this up, but.
You are a.
I'm a glutton. So for additions or subtractions from the historic list, do we want to put that as a notification? I'm not saying that we're noticing everybody. I'm saying if that happens, do we want to notice people?
Historic alteration permit, historic.
So we have alterations and demolition, but if someone wants to be removed?
If it's a potentially historic, it does not get noticed. It's an admin. And the historic resource demolition permit is required.
I mean, I like that we added the conceptual review. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. Okay with it.
Since we said it in the other section that that any additions to the list, the owners get notified, then it should be in the notice.
It should be in the notice.
It should be listed. So you won one.
I'm not looking to win. I'm just trying to get something that works.
I have one question. The number of feet is always confusing to me. We can't deliberate if we're within 500 feet. Three hundred feet is the conflict of interest zone and we only notice to 100 feet.
No.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet is the notice set by the state.
That's in state law.
In state law.
So.
And 500 feet is currently the fair political practices conflict of interest.
Okay. One four eight oh three oh C says 100, public notice of the requested public hearing will be mailed to the owners of real property located within a radius of 100 feet.
Oh, it should be through. Good catch.
That is for the administrative hearings.
That's for what?
That's for the different category of hearing.
Right.
Oh, okay.
This is a notice of a pending action. So what's pending action?
So that's under seventeen one four eight oh three oh for minor use permit and administrative design permit. Pending action is when the notice goes out, we'll state that there's a pending action by the community development director. But you can contact city hall by a certain date and ask for it to be, to set a hearing. And then we would send out additional notice to the 100 feet and tell people when that hearing is, if it were requested to go to hearing. So this is for your home occupancy permits, the minor use permits that are not a conditional use permit, but a minor use permit. So it's a.
So it's confusing in the way that it's listed because it just said it's under a heading of notice of pending action?
So you want notice of pending action to go on the chart?
Or notice of minor use permit and administrative design permit.
Yeah, maybe if it's notice of pending action, colon, minor use permits and administrative design review or something, just so it.
Yeah.
And where is the 300 foot listed?
Sorry?
It's on the chart here about method of.
Got it, got it. Oh, so maybe that's what confused me. The 100 foot is the only one that's repeated in the body of the, in the text of the section. So it's the only one that I grabbed.
That's why I asked if you wanted it in the table as well.
But it's in the table.
It is in the table. It's outlining the procedure for it, though, that this is different. For notice of pending action, the notice would go out that there's a pending action by the community development director and then they can request a hearing. Then if you go for the scheduling of hearings, let's see. Decision and notice, that outlines that it's going to go, it will be, go before a body to make a decision. So there, it's two different procedures.
So the notice of pending action and the scheduling of hearing only apply to minor use permits and administrative design permits?
Yes.
Then just, you need to make that clearer. Because it wasn't, when I was reading it, it wasn't clear to me that that, it wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, and I think sort of changing the titles in the title, saying what it's for could make it a little clearer, too.
Because the hearing procedure is the same for everything, right?
Yes.
So you kind of drop into it being specific and then drop back to it being general and that's, maybe that's going to be.
I think it's, yeah, we'll make it, we'll simplify it so it's more clear. Any others?
Back to me.
Okay. Do we move on to the glossary?
So on the. Take it page by page or?
On the very first one. Do we want any kind of, I mean, I don't know if we do timeframe in there. I mean, you're going to have to determine that something has been abandoned. And you say, you know, it's ceased or discontinued a use or activity. But if I discontinue it for two weeks, have I abandoned it? Do I need to leave it for 90 days? I mean, I don't know. It just seems pretty vague.
It may be used with that. If it's a code, it may say abandoned for a year.
Sure. In the non-conforming, it will specify exactly how long the abandonment is.
It's in addition to that term.
And then if you wanted to get more specific, say, within the sign code for when abandoned signs are, you could further define it if you wanted it to be different than the non-conforming. But in the non-conforming section, I want to say we originally had it at maybe 90 days and we extended it to 180. I can't quite remember. But so the number is where it will be regulated.
Well, I do think there ought to be something about signs. Because that's one thing that you do have on a fairly regular basis are, you know, someone moves out and there's an abandoned sign there. And, you know, it seems like if.
How do we do that? It is there for like real estate things or home office?
I'm just not remembering. So if we have it, that's fine if we don't.
I seem to recall that we do.
I thought it was in there for like real estate, yeah, different type of signs like that.
And that should, so I believe the non-conforming, we extended the time, and I want to say for half a year, possibly for businesses. So for a sign, would you prefer that that's less than the non-conforming?
Yeah, I would prefer for a sign, it's like 90 days.
Okay. And that would be for removal. Okay. So any more for the first page? Okay, we'll move on to page two.
Well, on the first page, I'm trying to see whether abutting and adjacent make any sense to me in terms of why we have two such terms. It seems to.
It's funny because it says abutting or adjoining, but when you go down to adjacent, it says abutting. So.
Directly abutting.
Yeah, directly.
What's indirectly abutting?
I thought.
Yes, there isn't one.
I don't know. I just, I was just having trouble.
I don't think we need both.
Could you?
So you can combine those into one.
But there's, yeah, you can combine it because there is adjacent probably in our, you know, used.
Yeah, put them all into one, abutting or adjoining or.
Neither one's really a highly technical term. I think most of us know what that word means.
Yeah, but you need it defined. You're right.
Also, just to go back momentarily, I pulled up.
Any others?
Back to me.
Okay. We move on to the glossary?
So on the...
Take it page by page, or?
On the very first one. Do we want any kind of, I mean, I don't know if we do timeframe in there. I mean, you're gonna have to determine that something has been abandoned, and you say, you know, it's ceased or discontinued a use or activity, but if I discontinue it for two weeks, have I abandoned it? Do I need to leave it for 90 days? I mean, I don't know, it just seems pretty vague.
It may be used with that. If it's a code, it may say abandoned for a year.
Sure, in the non-conforming, it will specify exactly how long the abandonment is.
Okay.
It's in addition to that term.
And then if you wanted to get more specific, say, within the sign code for when abandoned signs are, you could further define it, if you wanted it to be different than the non-conforming. But in the non-conforming section, I want to say we originally had it at maybe 90 days and we extended it to 180. I can't quite remember, but, so the number is where it will be regulated.
Well, I do think there ought to be something about signs, because that's one thing that you do have on a fairly regular basis, are, you know, someone moves out and there's an abandoned sign there, and, you know, it seems like if...
It is there for, like, real estate things or some coma.
I'm just not remembering, so if we have it, that's fine. If we don't...
I seem to recall that we do.
I thought it was in there for, like, real estate stuff, yeah, different type of signs like that.
And that should, so I believe the non-conforming, we extended the time, and I want to say for half a year, possibly for businesses. So for a sign, would you prefer that that's less than the non-conforming?
Yeah, I would prefer for a sign, it's like 90 days.
And that would be for removal. Okay. So any more for the first page? Okay, we'll move on to page two.
Well, on the first page, I'm trying to see whether abutting and adjacent make any sense to me, in terms of why we have two such terms. They seem to...
It's funny, because it says abutting or adjoining, but when you go down to adjacent, it says abutting, so.
Directly abutting.
Yeah, directly abutting.
What's indirectly abutting? If I thought to...
Yes, there isn't one.
I don't know, I just, I was just having trouble.
I don't think we need both.
Could you?
So you can combine those into one?
Yeah, you can combine them, because there is adjacent probably in our, you know, used.
Yeah, put them all into one, abutting or adjoining or...
Neither one's really a highly technical term. I think most of us know what that word means.
Yeah, but you need it defined, you're right.
Also, just to go back momentarily, I pulled up the signs.
Oh, good.
Think of 90 days.
Signs that have been abandoned for 90 days, prohibited.
Great, thank you.
Now I can put this away. Thanks for doing that.
They can find it a lot faster.
Yeah, I was starting to go and go on.
So that's a good reason not to put a date in the...
Yeah.
That's fine.
Glossary, perfect.
Yeah, that's perfect.
We agree.
I just forgot.
So we're on page two?
Yep, page two.
So, for me, on the auto dealerships, I would like to change it and say that it means a use primarily engaged in the sale or lease of new automobiles, period, takeout, and the "and" used. And then as an accessory service to the automobile, to the automobile sales, you could have sale of used cars. You know, I'm the one who gets paranoid about used car lots.
I think that's good. So what would you put the used cars under? I missed it.
Accessory services that the car dealer's gonna provide. So selling used cars is not their primary business, it's their secondary business.
I think if that's what we want to do, though, we should probably spell it out in the body of the zoning code, not stick it in the back of the glossary. You know, that when we talk about auto dealerships being on our road, that they're meant to be primarily new car dealers.
Well, personally, I think we should, but...
Yeah, I think it would be easy enough to change that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Has that already gone to the council?
I don't think they've made it that far yet.
We made it through the land use table, but we're bringing them the changes, so it's something we were still, yeah.
We can work that out.
We can work it out. Anything else want to?
You know, and what goes to the council is gonna come back to us, and then it's gonna go back to the council again, so there's, it's, there's gonna be some back and forth. So are we on the next page?
Page three?
Yeah.
So I just wondered about change of use, if that was sort of, that just confused me a little bit, and maybe it didn't confuse anybody else. I mean, I went, if you're selling, if you have a furniture store, and, you know, you decide that you want to be a liquor store, is that a change of use, even though they're both retail?
I think probably no.
It's an intensity of...
But I think what this is trying to say is to make the important point that if you have a particular use, and there's a change in the personnel, that they don't have to get a new use permit.
Right.
It goes with the property.
If I buy your restaurant, then, and I'm gonna have a restaurant, I'm fine. If I buy your restaurant, but I'm gonna do something else, I'm changing it. Okay, I'm fine.
That's an important thing. Page four?
I have a whopping one-letter typo at the bottom, number three deck. After the word outdoor, I think A should be taken out. That's my big question.
You're reading it.
So I don't have any more. I don't know if anybody else...
I don't have any more either.
But on that page?
Anywhere.
Any more in the glossary?
Rehabilitation.
You do? Well, why don't we then just do Ed?
Want to discuss?
These are gonna be really exciting.
Okay, we're ready.
I have one question, and it's just a question more than anything. Is everybody okay with wine bars and...
I like wine bars.
Beer tasting rooms not being listed as a separate thing?
Which definition is then?
So, under, where we have eating and drinking establishments, you have bars and lounges, you have restaurants and cafes. 160-5. But you don't have wine bars or beer tasting rooms, or, I know that one of the recent issues that became a really big problem with Beer 30 is that it's a, it's a beer lounge, if you will. But now it's, it's turning into much more than that. It's not a tasting room where people go and taste beer and then leave. It's a place where people go and sit and drink beer and have a picnic, and, and so it's turned into a whole different level of...
It's a beer hall.
...burden, if you were, on the, on the community. So the question is, should we define what a wine bar is versus a, or not? I'm just throwing it out there to ask the question.
So wouldn't a wine bar be a, be a place that's gonna serve alcoholic beverages for consumption of its guests, in which the serving of food is only incidental if they want to serve some?
Yeah, I would think in most cases, when we hear of a wine bar, that's what we think. But would it really not be more of a cafe in a lot of cases?
But then it's not a bar or a lounge.
Right, because then it would go under...
Then it becomes a restaurant or a cafe.
But I think we could add to bars and lounges, we could add breweries and wine bars to that category, because there's, they're proliferating, and so it's better to address it.
That's what I was thinking.
Go for it.
Breweries, tasting rooms.
Cocktail lounges are going away and the breweries are good, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we get to put conditions when those, those applications come in, hours and whatever, depending on the circumstances.
But you could just there, where it says includes cocktail lounges, nightclubs, and caverns, add wine bars and breweries. That's a pretty simple change.
So Ed, where was your?
So, I'm at page 160-6. I gave staff a different definition of easement, and you, are you okay with that?
Yeah, we reviewed it and we're okay with it. If you'd like to read it, you're welcome to.
I don't have it with me, but the problem with this one is, it talks about how an easement is granted, and it's not really correct, and it's not really necessary to the definition of an easement.
It's definition.
Ed, if you wrote it, I'm behind you.
Whatever Ed proposed is good on easement.
What he said.
Yeah, whatever Ed said's okay. We'll call it Ed's rule.
Ed's rule.
Ed's easement.
Ed's easement.
So we got a couple others like this, that are technical.
Stamp, stamp.
All right, what's the other one is, on page 160-10, we have a definition of a lot of record, which I'm not sure why we need that, but it says a lot of record, or legal lot, means a parcel which was legally created pursuant to the California Subdivision MAP Act. So that means that the Congress, that anything not created under the Subdivision MAP Act is not a legal lot, which is almost every lot in Capitola. Because the Subdivision MAP Act went into effect in 1974. So I don't think we want to say that.
Well, I think the MAP Act talks about pre-19, I thought it was '72, but '72 or '74 deed sales are not regulated by the MAP Act and are therefore legal.
I know, but this says it was legally created pursuant to the California Subdivision MAP Act. So it's talking about subdivision lots. I don't know why we need that, if that fits in any other portion of our code, but if we're gonna, if we have to define lot of record.
I don't know if we need to define it. I mean, it's in the state statute.
It should be much broader than that. I mean, it is used that way sometimes to refer to lots that were created only by a subdivision map since 1974, but...
Yes, the way you're, then I think I've heard it misused, is what I think. I hear a lot of record, but...
Means illegal, you know, something that legally created, which can happen in, like, you know, the Capitola subdivision up on, I think it was called Capitola Heights up in the jewel box, the subdivision 1905 or whatever.
And we can eliminate it.
I would, I think that's a...
Private state statute.
That's a pretty misleading term, unless it's really necessary. If it is, we should tweak it, and then...
Which one are you gonna do? Just say, which was legally created, period, or delete it altogether?
Just delete it unless we need it for some reason. I don't think we do.
Yeah, I think the definition of parcel and lot is...
Yeah, yeah, it covers it. It creates more problems than we need. The last one is 160-15. And this is the definition of right-of-way, which means a strip of land acquired by reservation, dedication, prescription, or condemnation, and intended to be occupied by a road, public sidewalk, railroad, et cetera. The mischief with that one is, again, that we don't need to explain how it gets created, because that's not really all-inclusive. In fact, it leaves out the most common way of creating a right-of-way. So which it just means a strip of land intended to be occupied by a road, et cetera.
And maybe we...
Can a right-of-way be for a driveway? A right-of-way could be for a path to...
The term is used to describe easements also, which is like, but this is talking about basically roads, and it's a reasonable use of the term.
Okay.
But the creation, getting, expanding to get into how they're created is where the problem arises.
So we're gonna add rehabilitation, or we're gonna get rid of Secretary of Interior Standards for historic rehabilitation, since we're not using that in our new historic?
It is in there.
It's in where? Can I make you go back to the historic part?
Oh, I guess it's not. I was just looking, I was looking at this last page.
Yeah, I think we're trying to get away from that. So we can remove that definition?
We're gonna add the definition of rehabilitation.
Yeah, he has to add rehabilitation, and he has to get rid of the Secretary of Interior Standards.
Oh, get rid of it? Oh, for, okay.
Where's that under S?
Oh, it's under 1615. 1615.
Bottom, bottom of the page.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Is that it? We got through the night? You guys are awesome, man.
Woot, woot. So you don't want to reference?
No.
So I just have a question.
Katie's having a tough time right now letting this whole...
Well, because it does, shall I back this up a little bit of why it maybe should be in there? They'll listen to you. Okay, so, within the historic chapter, we talk about SEQA and the necessary review to find it exempt, and the connection to the Secretary of Interior Standards. If an applicant comes in and doesn't know what they are, they could look here, and then they would know that they would go to the park service and they could learn more about it. But we're not regulating to those standards, but it's a...
They can look it up on their own.
Why shouldn't it be defined just because you're so opposed to the Secretary of Interior Standards?
I am so opposed to that whole thing.
You don't want it to be in our ordinance?
Yeah, exactly.
It's all right, we'll remember.
That's just, hey, I'm just, it's just an opinion. You guys do what you want to do.
Well, you guys are gonna do a nice handout for someone who comes in with a property, and you can, in your handout, put it in there.
Show them the survey.
I'm good with that. Hey, just for the record, I'm all for historical. I just sometimes don't see the concept behind some of these.
Well, that was a good example tonight, where we went from six-inch siding to eight-inch siding to meet the standards. Is there...
Well, we don't have to do that anymore, once this is...
Yeah, but here we're making this guy do it now, and so when I talk to him...
But I think we're still gonna have to do that, even though we adopt this ordinance.
Yeah, it's SEQA.
SEQA's gonna require you to, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
You're still gonna do all of that stuff. You're not getting away from the Secretary of State Historic Standards.
Well, then we need to rewrite this, rewrite this whole thing, because that was the whole concept we're getting over.
So, going back, what we were going to do was to codify today's existing practice, because we don't have a Capitola-centric historic ordinance. We could do that and then go astray from the Secretary of Interior Standards.
And that's what Los Gatos, that's why a lot of other...
And so that's kind of in the...
But I thought by doing what we're doing now is getting us, where we do have a...
Fortunately.
Our, this ordinance won't meet the purview of what...
Wasn't that originally what we were gonna do, is...
I think there was a strong desire to do it. It's just a matter of resource and time and moving this along.
That was what Gail originally asked.
Yeah.
And me, yeah.
Did you plagiarize Los Gatos or something like that?
We could, but I think there'd need to be a lot of stakeholder outreach, a lot of meetings. I mean, just based on, we're at meeting number 40, I think, tonight for the zoning code, so, you know, if we have 10 or 20 in addition to that, it's...
Rich, I get getting staff work done.
I appreciate that.
You're doing a great job of getting staff work done. More than, I mean, the last few years you've been here, it's been amazing. But I hate to put something in there that, just because we want to get it done. And the reality is, we're gonna have a lot of time, I think, because I don't think this is gonna get to the Coastal Commission for a while. But I hate to hold us to standards that doesn't meet the community needs.
Would it be possible just to get, I mean, I guess we could all look it up, but maybe to pass out the ordinance of a community like ours that has deviated from the, both Carmel and Los Gatos have, see what they look like and how difficult it might be to go to something like that, just at least so we can see...
Yeah, we can research it and share some information. I think the big part would be a lot of the public outreach, and I think with historic, you're gonna get a lot of divergent opinions.
I think, I think you'd be surprised. I think you get a lot of people that would like to, like, for example, the Canes, they want to restore their house to, and meet a certain standard, but at the same time, they're not keen on making the siding different in the back than it is in the front. And really, it just, it makes it stand out different, so I don't, I don't know. I think...
I don't think it's of value to us necessarily.
For Capitola, no, I don't think it, to me, it's just...
The railing on Wharf Road by the wharf there, when they were remodeling that and they had to deal with the old pipe, this old pipe railing that was there.
You mean for RISB? No, for what?
No, you know, there's that new one that's, as you go right toward the wharf. Yeah. Yeah, and that was, I mean, it was ridiculous, actually.
Yeah, I agree, that's, okay.
And they call it a hyphen, and why it makes sense to them is beyond me. I've had the argument with Catherine and Carolyn and really tried to understand their thinking, and it's, it's like in the Porsche Club, there are purists that don't want to have any parts that aren't 1959 in a 1959 Porsche, and then there are people that want it to look like a 1959 Porsche but act like a 20th century vehicle.
Right.
Two different frames of thought.
I get that analogy, that's good. That was good. Okay, so we'll continue this until September 19?
May I have a motion?
I'm sorry, you want...
I make a motion to continue the meeting till September 19.
Second. All those in favor? Hi.
My mother's birthday.